In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. David Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, September the 18th, 2017. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. I have none.
Hang with me, two seconds. Two seconds. Yes, I have, there's a correction. On the meeting minutes, it says, Sandy Seward moved to approve the minutes as presented, Dave Harrison seconded the motion, which was approved by two to zero voice vote, Sandy Seward abstained.
Hmm.
If you just change it to unanimous voice vote and take out "I would abstain." Please and thank you.
Okay, can you say that one more time? You did it.
A little slower.
Yeah. It'd be three oh unanimous voice vote?
Yes.
And take out "you abstained."
That is correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think I caught that on the tail end of the last meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
All right.
Other than that correction?
With the exception of the correction, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting with the correction.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have four pages of wastewater claims in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I. No questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims dated October 2nd, 2017, in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business from the previous meeting, we have no new business this evening, comments from Board members.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will go immediately into the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday 2000, or October the 2nd, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been given a printed copy of the previous minute, meeting minutes dated Monday, September the 18th, 2017. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
Nor do I. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, you have forty-three pages of corporate claims in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I do have a question, please. On page nine, Dan.
All right.
Page nine?
Yep.
The fifth line item for Kenworth for fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, fifteen cents.
Brad, well, wait a second. Can you tell us what that's about?
Prepare on a truck.
That's my only question, thank you.
Dave, any questions?
I have none.
No further questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the corporate claims dated October the 2nd, 2017, in the amount of one million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Under new business, we have several items tonight. The first one is quote openings for North Bend Road drainage improvement. And Board, there is three that we are going to open tonight. The last one on your sheet should say Eagle Valley. And at this time, I'll ask Board Member Sandy Seward to open the quotes and read them aloud, please.
Is nine hundred, I'm sorry, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred, nine dollars.
On the ledge. Standing on the ledge when you're done.
The second sealed bid is from J K E S Incorporated, Doing Business of Smith Project. This is one hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And the third sealed bid is from Eagle Valley. Difficult to open. And their quote is eighty-five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-five And that is all the bids.
Emily, can you approach, please? And take them with you and give us a recommendation at our next meeting?
I'll do that.
August the, or October the 16th.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, and I appreciate everybody who submitted a quote. Thank you. Move on to the next order of business. Change order, Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. Change order number one, which was in your packet. It, the contract award was nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred dollars, and the change order is a deduction of eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And if you turn to page three, the asphalt fill-in for around the storm drains was thirty-seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. They switched it to cement, which ended up costing twenty-eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars for a savings of approximately nine hundred and eighty dollars. So that is a change in the agreement, so that requires approval by this Board. Brad, do you have any comment on that?
On both of them, either one of them?
Let's just do change order one now.
Yeah, change order one. That was actually, the preferred method to do those was to put concrete in, and both the contractor, the inspector, agree that that was preferred method. It provides more stability, and it was cheaper, so sort of a win-win.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve change order number one for the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. And there's two forms to fill out for the clerk and myself, so we'll do these real quick, and then we'll move on to change order two. Brad, so stay right there.
Sure.
And also, Board, while we're talking about Churchman Sidewalk Project, we had another change order come in today. This would be change order number two on the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. And this one is for a elimination of part of the drainage and sidewalk from Boomer Corporation to Arlington and Churchman intersection. And the reason why that's been taken out is because soon after this project is done, then the roundabout starts, so there's no sense in putting this in and then having them tear it right back out. So Brad, do you want to comment on change order two?
Yeah, we were able to coordinate between engineers for both projects, and there was determined to be around 400 feet of this project that was going to extend into the next project, which is the roundabout. So again, one of the few times you see government work really efficiently and figure out that, hey, we probably shouldn't put this in and rip it right back out, you know? It obviously looks silly to the public, and it's not a good use of funds, so they did a great job of working together, which isn't always easy when you're using multiple engineering firms. So that's why this happened, and saved us some money, and then when they come in and do the roundabout, they won't be tearing out new infrastructure to do so, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from Board members?
No.
This is a savings in the contract of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents. So that is a good thing. And Brad, while you're up, can you give us an idea where they're at on this project?
They're pretty much complete. They have a little bit of, well, there's some sod and things like that to do, cosmetic landscaping type items, but infrastructure-wise, it's just about done. I think within the next week, they'll be wrapped up. There might be a little bit of HMA patching. I wasn't out there today, so I'm not sure if they got that done, but that was one of the last items. Most everything else has been completed. And both Phil and I have walked it. It looks great, they've done a nice job. I know the mayor's been out there as well. And Bob from Crossroads has done a nice job on the inspection.
We approved that, didn't we?
No, we haven't done it. Motion to approve change order number two on the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you for that, we didn't put it on, I didn't put it on the agenda. It came in today, but I wanted to get it out of the way. Thanks, Brad. Next order is AIM Health Insurance Update for 2018. They're getting close to renewing, and they want to know if we want to keep the current plans, or we want to change. And it's my opinion and my recommendation to this Board that we continue with the types of plans that we have and the percentages that the city pays and the employee pays. So any discussion from Board members?
What is the percentage that the city will have to pay?
I don't know, it's the same as...
What it was last year.
Yeah.
But I don't know right off the top of my head.
And we are, are we are in a three-year contract with them?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make said motion that we continue on with the current plans.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye and the motion carries as well. Next order of business is permission to hire a police officer.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting to hire Richard King as a police officer. Mr. King has passed all required tests to become a Beach Grove Police Officer. He is employed by the Nashville, Indiana Police Department and has passed the Police Academy in Plainfield, Indiana. Mr. King's start date, if approved, will be October 23rd of 2017, and his start training, and he will start training on this date. His starting salary will be that as a first-year probationary police officer with the pay of one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-six cents by weekly.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I am.
Dave?
None.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the chief's request to hire Richard King as a police officer.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Where does that put us, Chief?
We are looking for two more.
Okay.
That, we're one and three this year, but we're, this one, and then we have another one that we are looking at closely. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, I can bring that person to you. That would leave us still one short.
All right. Next up is a series of step increases for Tim White, Elizabeth Kessler, and Joseph Garrison. We'll do Officer White first.
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting that you approve the position move for Tim White from second-year patrolman to first-class patrolman. This will take effect, if approved, November 7th, 2017. His base will be five thousand, eight hundred and four, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen, thirty-two. That will be the first-class patrolman pay.
Floor is open for any questions or comments.
This is all budgeted, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye and the motion carries as well. All right, Chief Libby?
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting that you approve the position move for Elizabeth Kessler from the, from probationary officer to second-year patrolman. This will take effect, if approved, October 23rd, 2017. Her base will be fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-six cents, and it is, that is in the budget.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
Dave, anything?
I have none.
If no, there's no questions, ask for a motion to approve the request from the chief for Elizabeth Kessler. Okay, is it Kessler?
It's Kessler.
Kessler.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well and the motion carries. And the last one this evening is Officer Garrison. Chief?
Dear Mayor and Board, I'm requesting that you approve the position move for Joseph Garrison from probationary officer to second-year patrolman. This will take effect, if approved, October 24th, 2017. His base salary will be fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-six cents. This is also in the budget.
Thank you, Chief. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
Are they probationary officer for a year?
Yes.
Okay. Just thought so. I have no question, other than that.
No other questions or comments? Motion to approve the request from the chief concerning Joseph Garrison.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Chief, while you're up there, you want to talk about radios for a minute?
New radios, we met with the rep today from ERS, and placed an order for, hopefully, it won't be any more than what Dan said we had, a hundred thousand. The order we placed, he's going to go through and quote different prices. The radios come with just the radio. There's no battery, there's no antenna, there's no external mic, there's no holder for it, which I was surprised, no battery charger, all these are extra. And I go, well, we've got to have them. And the batteries for the new radios do not match our chargers that we have for the old radios, so we couldn't even say it that way. So I should be getting a quote within next couple of days, as far as how many radios we can get for what.
Okay. Any questions for Chief? Thank you.
Welcome, thanks.
Mark, I do have one question. On Richard King, I noticed on that paper, does he have any educational incentive pay because it's not listed on there?
He won't get it. He's so new that he will just get his probationary pay, and anything he would get won't come until his next year.
Okay, because I thought if he's got a college degree, he gets that...
Oh, he doesn't have that, no.
Okay, that's what I...
The only educational pay will be later on, will be his certification from the academy.
All right, thank you.
All right, last order of business this evening is a permit credit for Gene Ray Heating and Cooling. Do you want to talk about that one?
Sure. They came in, Gene Ray's did, and got a permit for a job they were going to do here in Beach Grove. And anyway, this was like at 2:45 in the afternoon, they told that they had the job. Well, at 8:15 in the morning, the person canceled out on them. So they did nothing really. So Gene Ray's wife called and asked if, you know, it was possible to get a refund. I said ordinarily, we do not give refunds, but I would certainly bring it in front of the Board, you know, to see what you guys has thought about it. I mean, they're spending a hundred and fifty dollars for nothing, basically, what they're doing, and they're out that out of their pocket.
And it's really not their fault.
No, they were trying to...
Right.
Get the permit, you know, the afternoon before.
And they're doing everything they're supposed to do on there, and the customer cancels last minute.
Right. I think they, if I'm not mistaken, Craig, don't you have 24 hours to cancel a contract? And so that's basically what happened on it.
So they would come in, the person who backed out, if they did work for Person B, it would account for Person B?
Right. So I mean...
Do they want the refund or credit?
Well, I think they'd do either one. They'd be happy just not have to pay it, and I agree with them, you know, if you're doing business, you're working on, you know, tight thing anyway, so I think we could give it to them in form of their next credit.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we give them the refund or issue them a credit.
Okay. I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second. The meeting is adjourned at 6:26 PM. We will meet again in these chambers on November the 5th. Thank you, the City Council will convene at 7:00 PM this evening.
November 5th?
November 5th, right?
October the 16th.
Oh, October, October 16th, that's the Gophers Council, sorry. Convene our common council meeting for Monday, October the 2nd, 2017. In lieu of a roll call, I'll ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Do you have the road council-at-large?
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Elizabeth Lamping, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4.
Councilor Maskary is called a little while ago, he's going to be absent this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I think it would be appropriate that we have a moment of silence this evening for the, All right, thank you very much. We have a couple of special presentations this evening. The first is Fire Prevention Week, and I'll ask Chief to come up for a proclamation. Chief? And I'll read the proclamation into the record. Fire Prevention Week, October the 8th, 2017, to October 14th, 2017. Whereas the City of Beach Grove is committed to ensuring that safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas United States Fire Department responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home construction, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room from the home, and a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, Every Second Counts, planned two ways out, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year. Therefore, I, Dennis B. Dunkley... Therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all the people of Beach Grove to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of their household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Beach Grove's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week in 2017. Chief?
Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Beach Grove Fire Department, for the men and women, not only on Fire Prevention Week, but for each and every day, the men and women of Beach Grove Fire Department are here 24/7 for the protection of our community. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the citizens of Las Vegas and their first responders. They did exceptional job and with heavy hearts tonight, you know, we think of those others. So thank you again for your support.
Thanks, Chief.
Quick question, are you still, are you going to do the smoke alarm throughout for the citizens with the Red, with American Red Cross?
We continue our smoke detector program and we do have smoke detectors to hand out. Unfortunately, our good contact with American Red Cross left.
Okay.
But we are still in partnership with the Red Cross and we're looking at doing another smoke detector blitz on some different levels within the community still.
Okay, and you'll let.
And absolutely, we'll let you know.
Fasten on so we can help, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
How good are smoke detectors in the home good for, Chief? I know you're supposed to check the battery often, but.
Yes, if you have one of the older smoke detectors with just the nine volt battery, we recommend that you change your battery twice a year, daylight savings time. And that smoke detector actually has a date on the back, they're usually good for three to five years, should be replaced. Some of the lithium battery detectors that we placed up on the last smoke detector blitz with American Red Cross are good for 10 years. And those are the newer, better detectors that we recommend.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have, I know one thing, on a smoke detector, even though you push that button and the buzzer goes off, that doesn't mean it's working. You know, you got, you, I know the party department and Chief probably agree with this, you light a napkin, just let the smoke go up into it, if it don't go off, get rid of it. They will, they sense that 24 hours, 365 days a year, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
We have a proclamation commemorating Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in the City of Beach Grove, and I'll ask our friend Joni Ketchall to join me at the podium. This is a proclamation to commemorate Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. Whereas the month of October marks the occasion of National SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month, observances across the United States focused on generating public understanding, compassion for bereaved families, and support for medical research. Whereas each year approximately 1 million pregnancies in the United States end in miscarried stillbirth or the death of a newborn baby. Whereas each year more than 26,000 families experience the stillbirth of a precious baby. Whereas even the shortest lives are still valuable and the grief of those who mourn the loss of these lives should not be trivialized. Whereas State Health Commissioner Dr. Jerome Adams has voiced concern about Indiana's infant mortality rate, where on the average, seven Hoosier babies for every 1,000 birth will not live to see their first birthday. And whereas the Observance of SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Month may provide validation to those who have lost a baby through miscarried stillbirth, SIDS, or other postnatal death. Whereas Recognizing SIDS, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month will provide the citizens of Beach Grove with an opportunity to increase their understanding of the great tragedy involved in the deaths of unborn and newborn babies. Now therefore, I, Dennis B. Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove, do hereby proclaim the month of October, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in the City of Beach Grove. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, to be affixed this second day of October, 2017. And I'm presenting this to Joni Ketchall with Franciscan Health, who has, for as long as I can remember, coordinated this Walk to Remember, so it's only appropriate that we present this to her. Joni?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council. This is the 32nd year that Beach Grove has supported this Walk to Remember, so that was several years ago, and I really appreciate more than you know their, the Beach Grove's helping us with that and supplying the school for us to use this year again, and I just really appreciate all the support here, so, thank you.
What's the date again, Joni?
I'm sorry.
What's the date?
It's October the 14th.
14th, okay.
And we'll be at the school, at Central Elementary School, I'll get there like 7:30, but the participants will start getting there about 9:30. About 2 o'clock, we finish up. We'll go to the Sarah T. Bolton Park, and she's a Hoosier poet, as you probably know here. And so a couple of years ago, I thought, I'm going to look up and see a little bit more about this Sarah T. Bolton, and she actually had written poetry to a family who had lost a baby. So that, we've started putting in the front of the program now, so I thought that that was a really neat piece of history, that it only appropriate that we continue here in Beach Grove to do that.
So volunteer help then, just.
Volunteer help would be awesome.
I signed up online and I encourage the council as well, it's a great event to volunteer for.
Yeah, so I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Oh, hang on a minute.
Hang on a minute.
Today's Joni's 25th birthday. So happy birthday, Joni.
Thank you.
All right. One last thing, and it's not on the agenda, but the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So we want to proclaim that as well, and all forms of cancer, we wish to eradicate, so we want to keep everybody who has, suffering from cancer and their families in our thoughts. It's a dreadful disease and I wish it would go away.
Real men wear pink.
Real men wear pink. All right, we'll move on to reading of the minutes. Council, you've been presented a printed copy of the council meeting minutes dated Tuesday, September the 5th, 2017. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes dated September the 5th, 2017, as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. You've also been handed a printed copy of the special meeting dated Monday, September the 11th, 2017. I do apologize for not putting that on the agenda, I was going to put that on the next agenda, along with tonight's minutes, since it was budget related. But anyway, we've got it here, we might as well go ahead and approve it, so the floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no corrections, comments, or questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Make the motion, we approve the minutes of 2000, September 11th, 2017.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Public comments, Councilor?
Nobody signed up, Mayor.
Okay, we'll move to committee reports. Youth Council.
Oh, me first, okay. It's been a, we had recently the Boeing Boeing play, which was a massive success, and last week we had.
Last week, right?
So last week we had College Go Week, which was a couple of different colleges came to the high school. Two of them had onsite acceptance, ISU and what was the other college?
AV Tech.
AV Tech had onsite acceptance, and I personally know at least like 15 people that got accepted to ISU, so it was a great success, and they're planning on bringing back more colleges later, seeing as it was a huge success. Wednesday, tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, Wednesday, I took a nap before this, is our community service day. So us high schoolers, a lot of them are going to be outside around the community, helping out and staying at the high school and doing a lot of different arts craft. So far for football, we've had a pretty great season. We've had a couple injuries, but so far as a team, they're still doing pretty well. Tonight's our volleyball senior night, so, actually it's already done by now, but tonight was our volleyball senior night. And then tomorrow, we have our Boys and Girls Cross Country ICC Championship at Blue River Park in Shelbyville, 5:30 PM. And yeah.
One thing to mention, and this is in part thanks to Mayor Buckley and Mr. Wiley and Andrew Wells is also part of this group, teen court is pretty much up and running. As one of the community service activities, we will train through Reach for Youth, about 20, 22 students to be part of our jury pool. Bishop hopes to be one of those students as well. And that evening, we had planned on a teen court, but it is imperative that we have a judge there, so we're actually going to postpone that to the week we get back from break, because we go on break the next two weeks. And we hope to really look at second semester, second nine weeks for students to really get some interventions in place for some attendance concerns, so we're really excited about that and certainly thank you for the support. I believe community health also was supportive of that, so. Any questions for us?
Just a comment, thank you for community service. My neighbor is, I'm looking so forward to her yard improvement.
Good.
On Wednesday.
Good.
So it's all set.
This year, we've got a lot of students going out in the community, just for help here around Beach Grove, so we're excited about that.
Really nice, so helpful.
Any other questions? Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
The RDC did not report, there was no activity ABC, I did not see a greenscape commission. Did they meet, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't checked my email. Compliance Division, Council, you should have a report from them, and the police chief issued a report for public safety. The only one left now is financial. Dan?
And I have nothing tonight, I figured the budget was overwhelming enough, so.
Okay.
I'll pass till next month.
Okay. That concludes committee reports. Under unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting, we're going to hear General Ordinance Number 8 and 9 on second and third reading concerning the budget. But before we do that, I've invited our friend Jeff Peters to come and address you on the financial condition of the city and any topic related to the 2018 budget. Jeff, always welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Council, for the opportunity as always to be here, appreciate it. Just wanted to speak briefly to you about some big overview for the budget. As we look at the budget in its entirety, the estimated expenditures that you have before you and have advertised to the taxpayers closely matches your 2018 revenue estimate that we've looked at, discussed with the Clerk Treasurer as well. So, you know, those are one of those things that you can control, obviously your expenditures, if you continue to live within your means, that gives you a sustainable model going forward. So based on what you've put together for this year and published, you're right on track for that. Things outside of your control, but things that are doing very well for the community as well as the state. If you remember, your maximum levy for operations is adjusted every year by a statutory formula, and it is the six-year average growth of non-farm income for the state of Indiana. The last few years, that number's been at about 2.6%, 2.8%. For 2018, it's going to be 4%. So that's a good sign all around, income levels are up, income tax amounts being distributed throughout the state, as well as Marion County are also up. A better sign locally even is your assessed value that has been certified to the state for use in your 2018 budget is up about 5.5%. So if your levy goes up 4%, your AV goes up 5.5%, your tax rate's going to drop about a percent and a half, which should also impact the amount of circuit breaker loss that you have and help you actually net collect more property tax dollars. So good news all around, things are looking well for the city, and you're on course to again be sustainable, complete the operations that you've got on the budget, and things look well for now. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, that's certainly good news from a layman's perspective, because I think some of you can agree with me, and the clerk can certainly agree with me, that wasn't always the case.
Mayor, I was just getting ready to say that I've seen Jeff hit that podium years in the past and not always more of a how do we make it work attitude than it was having that kind of news, so.
So I appreciate all the good work that has been done by you folks and previous council and clerk, everybody involved, because we're continuing to move forward, and that's what we need to do. That, I want to go into General Ordinance Number 8, 2017. It's up for approval on second reading, but before I do that, I want to go through it again with you, because there were some amendments to the ordinance after, or during the last meeting. And you should have received a new copy of the ordinance. Everywhere that it was amended, there should, you should see a red dot. Please, if you don't have that, let me know, and I'll give you mine. So the mayor's salary from the corporation was changed, the clerk's salary from the corporation was changed.
Dennis?
Yeah.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
In years past, it was a percentage increase would have been taken on your total salary, likewise the clerk's total salary.
Well, I asked last year, our last meeting, if it should come from the corporate or the sewage.
It should be 2% on both, I think.
On both?
Right. When you asked that question, I assumed you was going to take the entire amount out of the corporation, but like Chris is saying, it should be 2%.
Okay, I thought it was just 2%. That's why I asked that question, well, should I take it from the corporation or from the sewage? I don't know, you know. You know, and to begin with, I was hesitant because I don't want one anyway. So I can adjust that, I can make it 2%, 2% of whatever those two figures are.
Well, I can, I calculated it out for you, if you wanted to write it down for the mayor, from the sewage, that should increase to $29,306.64.
Say it again, Chris.
And for the Clerk Treasurer from sewage, that should increase to $26,442.48. And of course, the corporation figure is already accurate.
What was that again, Chris? On.
For the mayor, it would be $29,306.64. And for the Clerk Treasurer, $26,442.48.
Okay. I don't know if we, when I, when we introduced it on second reading, I don't know if we should change that figure or not. I might want to do it just for public disclosure.
Just make an amendment?
Yeah. Also, on page 2, down there under Department of Public Works Bill and Clerk, that figure was inaccurate, and that was changed. On page 3, under the commercial driver, that total figure was changed, that wasn't accurate. Down at the bottom of page 3, the hourly rate for part-time parks was changed to Down at the bottom of page three, the hourly rate for part-time parks was changed to 1377 on both accounts. And I think the last one was on page five, under the first batch of position pays, the disclosure was put in there, position pay listed above is not calculated in the base salary. Those were all amendments to the ordinance that was passed at our last meeting. So General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval for second reading tonight. Did you want to do that amendment, Chris?
I'll make an amendment that the mayor's salary from sewage should increase to the figure I previously stated, $29,306.64. And I would also amend that the clerk treasurer's salary half from sewage increases to $26,442.48.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on second reading only this evening. This time, I'll ask for motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We'll start here on my left, Bud.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on second reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record by title only.
Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is a salary ordinance fixing the bi-weekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, in the year 2018, bid ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval, second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on third reading and final reading with the amendment. This time, I'll ask for motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make a sub-motion.
I'll second.
We'll start on my left, Bud.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is a salary ordinance fixing the bi-weekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, in the year 2018, bid ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you, clerk. General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for motion to approve.
Your honor, could I make one comment about, since this will be it? It's good to see the increase in the mayor and clerk go along with the rest of the city. And I do want to add that if it was a personal matter, I know the mayor himself, he doesn't want any more money. He's, I'm like, he's perfectly happy. But excluding names from it, it's about the future. It's about the office itself, never about the person. And I'm just glad to see these numbers go up. A person that takes like the mayor in his position or the clerk, the amount of responsibility, it's where it lies at. You have, you have all the police and fire and all city workers, they have their responsibility, and it goes up the chain. But it comes to the end, it's going to be the mayor or the clerk in their positions that ultimately hold the responsibility. So I just wanted to say, I think it's a good thing when you look at it just as the word mayor and clerk treasurer. That's it, thank you.
General Ordinance Number Eight, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll ask for motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve, ordinance number eight.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, which is the 2018 budget ordinance, is up for approval on second reading only this evening. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Bid ordained, resolved by the Beach Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2018, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purpose herein specified, subject to the laws governing the saying. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all the funds must be completed and submitted in a manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the Beach Grove Common Council. Name of the adopting entity fiscal body is Beach Grove Common Council. Type of adopting entity fiscal body, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, 10/2/2017. The funds, the rainy day fund, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, adopted tax rate zero. The general fund, adopted budget $8,775,961. Adopted tax levy $6,495,697. Adopted tax rate 1.6239%. Debt service, adopted budget $226,101. Adopted tax levy $219,000. Adopted tax rate is 0.0548. The fire pension, adopted budget $354,000. The adopted tax levy is $85,000. Adopted tax rate is 0.0213. Police pension, adopted budget $610,000. Adopted tax levy $60,000. Adopted tax rate 0.0150. Local roads and street, adopted budget $580,000. Adopted tax levy is zero. Adopted tax rate is zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget is $1,232,40. Adopted tax levy is zero. Adopted tax rate is zero. Continuing education, adopted budget $40,000. Adopted tax levy zero. And adopted tax rate is zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget $10,000. Adopted tax levy zero. Adopted tax rate zero. The total adopted budget amount is $11,828,102. The adopted tax levy is $6,859,697. And the adopted tax rate is 1.7150%. Home rule funds, not reviewed by the DLGF, public safety low it, the 1170 fund, the adopted budget is $1,598,485.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask for motion to approve the ordinance.
I have a question or amendment possible, if that's okay? I spoke with, is it okay to talk? I spoke with Mr. Meriwether from DPW after the meeting, and on the Beach Grove Civil City Fund, local roads, the one that was presented in our packet did not separate and it didn't have like it separated especially for the Franciscan Trail. Mr. Meriwether asked that we kind of amend that to have this breakdown as he had presented to the budget to begin with. I don't know why it was changed from his presentation to where we got it, but I just, and I gave a copy to all the councilmen, it's not going to change any of the, it's not going to change any monies or any dollars. It's just breaks, it divides out the money and how it's to be used. And Brad can explain it better than I can if he's here. Does that make sense?
I'll, I'll leave it, it's up to the council, but we're just advertising the total figure of the budget, of that category.
Okay.
So I, if the council wants to do it, that's fine, but as long as that figure, that figure doesn't change, so I don't know if that requires a motion or not, Dan.
According to the DLGF, it doesn't have to be broken down, and Jeff, do you agree with that?
I agree.
And on the gateway, I don't think there's a place for you to break that completely down, and that's where it's advertised at. Alls you have to do is put total dollar amounts.
Okay.
But I think the intent is, I think there is, he buys gravel out of it and I don't even remember. I think that would still is the same as it always has been. So I wouldn't.
Well, I just didn't know as far as transparency and an explanation of the breakdown of the money.
No, I think, I just, either way, it's the same thing.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just.
If it's not necessary, it doesn't matter, I just.
General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, is up for approval on second reading only. Ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, bid ordained, resolved by the Beach Grove Common Council that for the express, for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2018, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the saying. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the Beach Grove Common Council. Name of the adopting entity fiscal body is the Beach Grove Common Council. Type of adopting entity fiscal body, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, 10/2/2017. Fund names, the rainy day, adopted budget zero, adopted tax levy zero, and adopted tax rate is zero. The general fund, adopted budget $8,775,961. Adopted tax levy $6,495,697. Adopted tax rate 1.6239%. Debt service, $226,101 is the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy is $219,000 for adopted tax rate of 0.0548. Fire pension, adopted budget $354,000. Adopted tax levy $85,000. Adopted tax rate 0.0213. Police pension, $610,000 is the adopted budget. Adopted tax levy $60,000. Adopted tax rate is 0.0150. Local roads and streets, $580,000 is the adopted budget. 0% adopted tax levy and 0% adopted tax rate. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget $1,232,40. Adopted tax levy zero. Adopted tax rate zero. Continuing education, $40,000 is the adopted budget. Adopted tax levy is zero. Adopted tax rate is zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget $10,000. Adopted tax levy is zero. And adopted tax rate is zero. The adopted budget total is $11,828,102. Adopted tax levy is $6,859,697. And the adopted tax rate is 1.7150. The home rule funds is the public safety low it, the 1170 fund, the adopted budget is $1,598,485.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number Nine, 2017, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for motion to approve. I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have two items. The first item is Resolution Number 13, 2017, concerning budget advertising. And at this time, I want to call Jeff Peters back up to the podium to explain the resolution. Jeff?
This resolution before you, statement of objection, appealing action of tax adjustment board or county auditor in accordance with IC 6-1.1-17-15, is a resolution that you have executed each year with your budget for the last many years. Under certain circumstances, the tax adjustment board or the Marion County Auditor can review and change tax rates, levies, and so forth differently than what you have advertised to your taxpayers and adopted here tonight. If that circumstance would occur, you would be bound by those adjustments but for your execution of this resolution, which tells the state disregard anything that they would do at the county level, review our budget as we prepared it, advertised it, and adopted it. So it's kind of a belt and suspenders approach for you to make sure that you get the budget that you've approved.
Has that ever happened, Jeff?
It has. It's been a long time, and now that we've gone to the gateway, we're pretty much
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Thank you. Last order of business is a request from the police department to transfer funds. And before I call the chief up, I wanted to talk to the council about, when you approved the budget that we're currently working in, you approved for three officers to be hired. That wasn't, hasn't been the case this year for a couple of reasons. And I doubt that three officers will be hired between now and the end of the year. So what the chief wants to do, and I'll let him talk about it, is to transfer the funds to buy cars. But I think that it's only fair to this body because when you approve the budget, you wanted police officers to be hired. And that is not the case. So I think it's only fair that you folks either approve or deny the request to transfer funds. So I'll defer to the police chief to discuss what he would like to do. Chief?
Dear Mayor and council members, I'm requesting to transfer one hundred and ten thousand from salary, which is for three new officers, which would be the probationary officers, to the public safety tax fund to purchase new cars and equipment for the cars. This would leave thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars in the salary to pay for two new officers for the rest of the year. We are still in the process for the three positions, and those positions are in the twenty eighteen budget also. To explain this a little bit, for two years, I've been looking for new officers. And tonight, I was approved by the Board of Works to hire one. It has taken us almost two years to try to find qualified people that would fit in to be able to serve us Beech Grove. Physically, they haven't been able to. Psychologically, they haven't fit into our test, lie detector test. They have revealed certain things that we would not hire to be police for the city of Beech Grove. That is, our requirements probably are a little bit tougher, and to serve the citizens, I think they should stay there. We're not going to lower our quality for, of officers. I don't want to do that. But the money's there now that we can purchase cars for them. We have some cars that are seven, eight, nine years old that they're out driving in. So get the opportunity to purchase new cars, I think that's a good thing. And I'm just asking you to use the money that's there. And we still are looking for the officers that would fit into the city.
Mark, I'd like to comment. I know you haven't seen this, but anyway, I did some homework after you and I spoke at, after the last meeting. And this is some good news. What I'm going to ask the council for is permission to transfer appropriations. After reviewing the budget, I have found that the police have in their budget additional funds available to purchase police cars. This is a result of salaries budgeted for additional police officers, but none being hired this year so far. Currently, the police have over seven hundred thousand remaining in salaries and only four hundred and ninety-one thousand estimated salaries for the remainder of the year. So I would like to transfer two hundred and twenty thousand dollars from police regular salaries to police capital improvement vehicles. And some of these numbers may not, you know, you, you may not see all these because there's different things. There's taxes and so forth. But anyway, after we talked in the last meeting, I think you was talking about two or three vehicles. And I think you've already purchased three this year that we paid cash or are in the process of doing.
Yeah, when they get built.
Anyway, with this, I figure you possibly could get ten new vehicles this year. That's up to you.
And the council approved ninety.
Ninety thousand.
Thousand for next year.
Right. And this is cash, so it's not going to strap you down for the next five years. Last year, we bought a fire truck. We bought an ambulance. And we paid cash for them. So this is really good.
Yes.
And I, I hope, you know, it works out for you. You'll have to get the, the price quotes on them, which you've already submitted some, but that's more than double what you was asking for.
I appreciate that.
And I didn't, I would.
Do you know that much, chief?
We have seven, seven vehicles that are at least seven years old, have eighty-nine, ninety thousand miles on them. And then when you figure another twenty-five thousand in engine mileage, yes, we, we could use them, but we had not planned on that. And I was just, I don't ask when I'm told that we don't have the money. So, yeah, with, the equipment for the police cars are close to eight thousand dollars. A new laptop and, because they're new cars, old equipment won't fit in them because they're smaller. So, yeah, it's, I can use it.
Chief, I got a question. I know you buy cars, and I'm not, but some of the trucks you got, aren't those more roomy and do they cost that much more?
Some of the trucks, you're talking about the Tahos, probably.
I see police officers in them. I mean, I know Captain Egan has one, I think, but.
Yeah, they, when we purchased those, I think they're twenty-twelves, so they're five years old. They were cheaper than some cars. I don't know why Chevy did it. I appreciate it, but at that time, they were less expensive. And now they're eight to ten thousand dollars more. And we're looking at purchasing one more, but it's not, our trade-in value on that with one other one will be less. But the new cars that we look at are all-wheel drive, great for rain and snow. They were going to purchase utility vehicle, basically Ford won't like it, but I call it Explorer instead of the Taurus. The Taurus is small. For the smaller officers, that's good. The Explorer is better, or the police utility vehicle, I'll say. So that's a little bit bigger. Because the Tahos cost so much more, I like to get away from that sum.
Yeah.
If, because the cost, the increase in cost of them, I can pay the equipment.
Sure.
And the price of the vehicle for the cost of the Tahoe.
Right.
Chief, why don't you just go ahead and talk to them about radios?
Oh, today I put in an order for new police radios. We probably will get half of what our order is. And the rep explained to me that when you buy a government radio, police, fire, or whatever, you actually buy the radio. And then you buy a battery, you buy an antenna, you buy a battery charger for it, you buy the extended mic, you buy the holder, and any other accessories. And I go, but it's a radio, you know? He goes, that's right, but that. So within a couple of days, I should get a price. And I was allotted a hundred thousand to purchase radios, so I'll find out how much I can get for that within a couple of days. And I, the old radios will still work, but we have some old radios that guys can try to talk on it, and all you get is squealing. And I think Buddy can confirm that when a dispatcher or control operator hears a squealing, that's all they hear. And an officer could get in trouble pretty quick with a bad radio. And they're not repairing them anymore. Now, if they have parts for them, they will, but they, they're twenty years old, I think. Their, their model is, so Motorola wants to build veteran improved. These are.
I'd, I'd like to mention also on them radios, we paid cash for the police and the fire half of this year. So that's, you know, this will help you guys down the road where you're not strapped on your budgets so much, and we can use it for more budgetary items.
Mayor, you just need a voice vote?
Well, what I wanted to do is, I want the council to disregard the chief's original request and replace it with the one that titled Permission to Transfer Appropriations, October second, two thousand and seventeen. And I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments. If there are none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the transfer appropriation for the police department.
I'll make said motion. I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much. That concludes new business. Council comments beginning on Buddy.
I'll try to be quick, Mayor. I know I don't do good at it. Thank you for your, your service and so forth, Dan. Thank you for finding some extra money within the budget. I did want to, I would have probably told the mayor this in private, but I'm just going to say it now. On the senior center building, I, I received a call. And of course, we know that it was called the Elton Gishweiler Beech Grove Senior Center. And it's not marked very well. I know it used to be a sign up in the window. There is a plaque, and I'm not sure what the letterhead is, but I just probably throw it at you, Mayor, and if I can help to try to see what we can do to kind of get that name a little better out there. I don't know what happened to the, the thing that was hanging to the window that had the name, but the original, my original complaint was my sister. She called me up, and I had to drive by there. And so if we could do something with trying to make sure that name's more revealing, that's it.
I'll ask them about the sign tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. It seems like every day we have affairs or sending out people in the United States and in the world through natural disaster or through violence. And we need to keep that up. We always say, God bless America, but America has to bless God before we get back on our feet. What I got to say?
Dave?
Thank you everyone for coming. And this is probably, I've been doing this for six years, I think. This is the quickest budget I've put through, I'll put through. Usually, we go till ten o'clock. Good job, Mayor.
Mayor and clerk did a good job.
Liz?
Again, thank you for the, agreed. It's, I think we've learned a lot and come together well as a council, and I agree, it's, this was nice. It's a great feeling to know the good news about the budget and our ability to move and, and do well for all of our departments. Thank you.
I echo those sentiments about the budget. It went fairly easy, and I think it's a good budget. This past weekend, we lost a Beech Grove local, Bruce Osborne. He left a wife and several little girls. I understand he was killed in a car accident. And I'd just ask your prayers for his wife, Lauren Osborne, as she takes over this phase of her life. God bless her and her daughters.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. One, a couple announcements. First, since we last met, we received notification from INDOT that the city will receive three hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars in community crossing funds, probably in the spring of next year, and that's for paving. October, the twenty-fourth, is a rip and cutting ceremony for the Churchman Sidewalk Project. That is a one-point-three-million-dollar project that is almost complete. And so that's good news for the city. And then we will be applying in November for more funding for three additional projects in the city. So we just keep going, and it keeps getting better and better. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Meeting is adjourned. Dan, I don't know what time.
I put my glasses on.
Eight oh one.
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two. Thank you so much.